It is 2:03 and time to call the meeting to order. Judge Gilbert, would you come forward and say our invocation for us, please, sir, and then we'll do the pledges?
Thank you. Dear and Father, we want to thank you this day for the wonderful day that you've given us, the clouds that we have before us today. May you use those to provide rain and provide the water in which this city needs. We ask that you look over this council today as they make the decisions that are going to be ruling upon this city. We know it's a hard decision for them to make, for these people that are here with us today that have worked hard and that continue to work for the benefit of this city. We want to thank you for all the many wonderful blessings that you've given us. We ask that you guide, guard, and direct each of us in our daily lives. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To Texas, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Judge. I got a call about 1:00 from Daniel, and he is having some family issues, and he will not be with us today. He asked for me to make his apologies. He wanted to be, but instead, we have Daniel. So, everything y'all had ready, I mean, we have Michael. So, everything y'all had ready and lined up, prepared for Daniel, Michael gets today. Anyway, this is the work session agenda. See, all matters listed under the work session agenda are presented for discussion in future planning purposes only. No administrative or regulatory action will be taken by the council. Public comment will not be accepted during the work session agenda. And if council desires that to be changed, where we do want public opinion, we will take public comment on this. So, what we have now is discussion and considerations related to the fiscal year 213, 214 budget, and this will be taken care of by Morgan Craig-Witten?
Chad-Witten.
This Morgan and Michael will take care of that.
Just Morgan.
Morgan.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. As you recall, we've got some decisions to make. We hope to place money where council's priority is so that we can address as many of those issues as possible. And ideally, we'd get through all of the goals or all of the money. Usually, we run out of money before we run out of goals. Today, but we'll certainly be happy to make as much progress as we can. With that, Morgan, would you start us off, please?
Sure. Certainly interrupt me any questions or items you want to pause on. A lot of this is information we've gone over in separate meetings, so I may clip along at a pace that you would like to pause, and certainly, please just stop me. Of course, we always start with the calendar because that is ever-present in our mind through the truth and taxation deadlines. Here we are, August 27th, with our special workshop. September 3rd is second reading and approval of the budget ordinance, so that'll be at our next regularly scheduled meeting. Also be introduction of the tax levy ordinance, and on September 17th, we'll finally adopt that tax levy ordinance to be put into effect for the fiscal year beginning October 1st.
Morgan, before we move too much farther, can I get the guys in the back to turn your microphone up, please? I'm having trouble hearing you.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so, we've gone over the top or common priorities from council members. Recall that we've had individual meetings, we've had group meetings, and we're hearing a lot of the same items over and over. As Michael stated, the goals that we hope to fund, and then we'll match the money to it as we're able. So, there are a couple slides here reminding us of the goals that staff set forth preparing this budget by utilizing city council's direction. The first item there is street construction and maintenance. Recall that we're estimating about $8 million annually. That's probably a low figure. It could be $8 to $11 million annually to get that on a seven-year rotation, which would be appropriate for our city. After we get through those first few years of funding it at that level, it will decrease, but because of the state that our streets are in, we would need $8 to $11 million added to the budget to meet that need. The next item there is to talk about stormwater fee and projects, an analysis of how that fee is levied, what the eligible uses are in the current CIP that's currently adopted over $55 million worth of projects that need funding attached to them. They're quantity projects that are not eligible for that stormwater fee. So, these are items that speak to stormwater volume and runoff to the tune of $55 million, the total of all projects there. We've heard again and again to keep the property tax rate flat in looking at the big goals that we have and the funding sources that don't quite match up to these goals. We've been indicated to keep that property tax rate flat. If we were to lower that by one cent, the current rate of 78.1 cents, the value of one cent would be a loss of revenue of $370,000 and change. Continuing along with the priorities we're getting from the council members, watering in public spaces due to new parks being brought online and water rates going up, there is a need there. Departments have indicated that they would need $310,000 added to this year's budget to appropriately water open spaces. These public spaces include parks, Texas Bank Sports Complex, Fairmount Cemetery, and so that's what we would ask, what divisions have asked to be added to the budget for this year. And the last item there, some variation of wages. We heard from multiple people, whether it is retaining current employees or recruiting future employees, or addressing the ranges, any variety of that, something to do with wages. I've thrown some figures on the screen here. This is with an asterisk, with the caveat, that when I say 3% equals $647,000, that's just for the general fund excluding police meet and confer. That does include benefits. It does not change the pay ranges. It only addresses positions currently occupied and giving some variation of 3%. And of course, that could be a 2%, it could be based on merit evaluations and split up however, but to have a dollar figure to start working with...
We, in general, we prepare this kind of number so that council has an idea of what kind of varying raise target, what the fiscal impact is of that. As we get into more specifics about the impact of varying raises based on merit, and we've talked about stratifying raises, in other words, people at lower levels get targeted for higher raises, and targeting jobs where we have high vacancy rates. We'll need to get Lisa to help us with that. What we've done is prepare this so you have an idea what the fiscal impact is of these varying levels.
So, that wraps it up for priorities from council members. Those are the top five or so items that we're hearing again and again. Another item of note as we talk about adopting this budget are the target increase requests. These are items that the division managers and directors have submitted that they need added to their budget to continue current operations, to continue offering the services that are tasked to them. The original list of submissions exceeded $7.5 million. The Budget Committee prioritized this list down to $2.7 million, and we met with departments to further drill down this list down to $1.2 million, and that list was emailed out to y'all a couple weeks ago, and I have it here if we want to pull it up or hard copy. We reviewed the draft budget in individual meetings. We have the proposed budget before you today, which included a few items, like, for example, meet and confer, contract negotiations, fire department, building debt service, and one other item. If you'll excuse me, I'm sorry, this is an old presentation, and I have the new one queued up that was sent to you in your background packet. So, as items, I just spoke to you, that these items were included in the proposed budget, the meet and confer contract at a cost of $465,000. The fire training center debt service to match that local grant for $200,000. Contractually obligated target increase requests, these are items that divisions asked to be added to their budget, but we have a contract in place and we must fund them. So, that's $2,500 almost for the increase to the Water Lily contract. And then, the remainder available in contingency is $1,308,000. Recall that, as we discussed last meeting, that this is the amount of money left over or available for use. It is certainly subject to city council's pleasure, whether it be used for raises, priorities as we've discussed, target increases, or any other items. So, to kind of give a graphic of what that looks like is, we started this budget process in our individual meetings talking about revenue excess of $1,976,000. When you subtract out the cost from meet and confer and subtract out the cost for the fire debt service and the contractually obligated target increase, those three items there, that leaves contingency of $1,308,000, and that's the marginal revenue, the amount that's available for other items.
Morgan, let me ask you, I know it's a small amount, but I don't understand the 2045 contractually obligated, what, can you?
I don't remember that. Good question.
That is the contract that we have with Ken Lannan. If you recall, a few years ago, we moved him from an employee to contracting services. So, he provides all the work at the Water Lilies and maintains all that, and the city contracts with him to provide that. So, he's not an actual employee, he's contracted labor.
Okay.
And with that, we have...
Before we go too much further, can you go back to that last slide? I think the key to take away from this slide is that in the general fund, as we discuss council priorities, there is currently available $1.3 million to address what the cost of those priorities. That's in the general fund, and that's something to keep in mind as we have our discussions.
May I?
Yes, ma'am.
The contractually obligated target increase, I was on council when that was, did I hear you correctly, that that has to do with the Water Lily project, the person that's contracted?
Correct, and that contract has an increase amount per year.
Just out of curiosity, what is the 2045, how does it represent a percentage?
I don't know. I'd have to ask Carl if he might, we'd have to look at what his current, two and a half.
Okay.
I knew Carl would know, he's...
Thank you.
And with that, we have the individual line items that are in your financial summaries available to go over in more detail. We'll start with general fund revenue, the primary...
Morgan, before we get too far into this, Mayor, a lot of this material we've already covered more than once, and we'd be glad to go through it again. The question is, how would you like to proceed?
I've seen enough myself.
I would go through it.
I think, yeah, I think we could speed up a little bit. Some of this, yeah, it's coming back, so...
Give us an abbreviated.
Okay. Property taxes up, as discussed. Sales taxes up about 7%. License and permits is down slightly. We had a question on that, and we're ready to speak to the methodology used to arrive that number if it's the council's pleasure. Charges for service are up over $500,000. That's largely due to the ambulance fee of $610,000 being increased. Municipal court volume is down, so revenue is down substantially. Transfers in are down $65,000 from the landfill fund, which yields the total general fund revenues increased $1,988,000. Then that gets us on into expenditures. The only changes really of note here are either due to attrition, due to staff turnover, or due to reorganizations. So, it's also important to note, of course, that the fiscal year 13 current budget is a budget that's been amended many times, and so you'll see, for example, municipal court, current budget of $2.8 million almost, proposed budget of $2.16 million. That's a reduction of $630,000. That's entirely due to the carryover budget amendment. And so, when we set targets, we base it on original budget, so those restricted items and those one-time projects are not included. And that gets us into human resources and finance. Again, just some attrition there, not any big items to report, any big changes there. Development Corporation and Development Services, this is due to a rework, some changes there due to splitting that director out into two separate functions. Neighborhood and Family Services, again, a rework with the Stormwater Division about how to enforce those codes. Health Services, a rework due to grants changing. Police Department expenditure, the $15 million budget includes carryovers, but then we added meet and confer of $465,000. So, when you look at police, their increase was only $58,000. That's the net of those two items changing. Fire and ambulance, you'll see that increase of $587,000. That's largely due to the debt service for the building and for billing fees associated with that higher ambulance volume. Operations and Parks and Recreation, not many changes there. And other, that $1.5 million, the non-departmental that increased, the majority of that is the $1,308,000 of contingency, where that's currently budgeted in non-departmental and available for use. So, it's not been allocated to any division or any service or any program. It's simply available for city council's direction.
As council directs, we'll spread that money out where council authorizes it in the budget.
So, what is the difference between the $1,000, $1.3 and that $1.5? It's, you know, $200,000, what is that?
It's largely in non-departmental. It includes the contracts with outside entities like the Appraisal District, which I think is actually staying flat. But also, the tax rebate agreements, I believe, went up, and so those are items where we've multi-year contracts, and so those are funded in the fiscal year 14 at the level they were contracted at.
Could you please back up one or two? There, you were talking about the million, some odd thousand dollars that need to be allocated, and I'm not sure which, the budgets you gave us are not numbered, so I don't know which page you were on.
The total general fund revenues increased $1,988,000, and then when you compare that to the small exchanges in expenditure, the revenue over expenditure was the $1,976,000 itemized here.
The meet and confer dollar amount, how does that equate out to a percentage increase?
It's a different percentage for, depending on the level.
Give me the low and the high.
Lisa, did you say average of four?
Average of 4%.
Well, we're in there, I'm sure you said it, I just didn't hear the fire compression rate. Where is that taken care of in there?
Good question. That is not included there. It is still an option with the $1.3 million.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
How much was the columbarium, to do the columbarium and get that started? What was the low end, the lowest we could go to get that started?
$316,000, Rodney.
$316?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
What were we looking at in fire compression to bring that up?
$244.
What are we looking at?
Yeah, as far as money.
What is the cost?
$200 and something thousand.
To bring up them in their compression issues?
Yeah, according to the plan.
$240.
$240.
They told me $244.
I'm confused. I remember the $244 readily, but I either read or someone made the statement that there was only one fireman that that affected, and that's not so?
No, there's a, Brian could explain it, but there's a whole package of that as far as where the compression goes. So, like Morgan said earlier, you know, the dollars they figured in in this budget are just dollars to help, because you can address the compression yet never give anyone, you know, a raise in regard to that. But the $244 basically will fix the problem at hand, and Brian, if you have more to add to that, come do so.
But surely, that would be more than one employee that it would fix.
Oh, yes, it is.
Right, that's what I was having a problem with.
It hits in certain ranges more so than others, and that is true. And Brian can explain that further as well.
I'm actually going to explain it. The $244,000 was the number that came out of the new fire rates that they were charging for ambulances, and the new pay scale that Brian had proposed to change the way the salaries are done in fire was going to cost $244. It's not a compression issue, it's for them to change their entire structure without having steps to where they're paid a longevity or loyalty pay and so forth, that whole scenario...
...that they talked about.
Yes, it will solve, it will keep compression from ever becoming an issue. Is that what it does? But I was the one that did say there was one employee presently at fire that would have suffered had they promoted, but they haven't promoted, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Lisa?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought Brian was getting up next.
Do you know what percentage that works out to be in the fire pay increase?
No, that would definitely be a Brian question, because he worked up the scale.
Okay, then I'll let him measure it.
I'm not sure what percentage that works out to be, because there's multiple ranks in there that get no pay raises whatsoever, because basically, it's affecting the lower end on almost all of that money, so...
And you did mention that we could do that over two years?
You could stagger it out, because nearly all of it is in the bottom part. You could phase it in if you chose to do so.
And I think that could be easily done. If that's the direction y'all want to go, we could split that and make it work.
Brian, do you have an idea what that first year cost would be?
Well, you could just basically half it. $4,000 of that is ranks other than firefighter. About $240,000 of that is all firefighter, the lowest rank.
Okay. Well, Morgan, just for the sake of making this thing work, why don't we plug in $125,000 as on this sheet? That shows us how it works, and it also moves us in that direction.
That would move you halfway there.
Yes, sir.
Since the city council was not involved in the line item construction of this budget, I would like to talk about some possible cuts before we start spending all our money. And if we had more cuts, we have more money to spend.
I think we're open to hear what council would advise.
Well, I also would like to talk about not being in the budget workshops that we've always done before. You know, Mayor Lon had put us in a line item budget, and we were able to look at, and I think, more effectively, cut or increase where was necessary. And now, we're back, we're given summaries, summaries, and it's not as easy to see what those items are. And there are some things that I would like to discuss. For instance, one of the position classifications we have is called a volunteer and visitor service coordinator, and I thought all of that was volunteer. I didn't know we had a budget dollar for that salaried position. It has always been a volunteered position before, so I'm questioning what some of these are.
Sure, let's, if, can we talk about what sheet you're looking at? Lisa's?
I'm looking at the Sensational Pay Plan, the classifications.
Instead of $125?
In the...
$125.
It lists the job position as being grade 15, volunteer and visitor coordinator, and I thought those were volunteers. It was a few years ago.
Lisa, can, it's...
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
That's one of mine. That's Corey Robinson of our staff. He is the visitor and volunteer services coordinator. It's a long title, but it takes on a broad variety of duties, including running a visitor desk. He coordinates the gift shop, volunteers, living history, baseball, and he also makes a pretty darn good uniform.
Okay, you just cleared it up. Visitor Center, to me, is the visitor center where the chamber is.
We would like you to think of ours, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's for, thank you.
Were you thinking the chamber, Charlotte, is that?
Mm-hmm. That's the visitor center.
Right.
Can we get back into my cuts?
Yes.
And I urge everybody else to come forward with their own cuts, too. Certainly, there ought to be plenty of things in here that can be cut, and I hope everybody's got their own things that they see that are not essential items that can be cut. And let me just pass down my list so everybody can look at it.
Winky while they're doing that, can I ask one quick question about something before?
Sure, go ahead.
Morgan, even on the budget that you have there, even for us, for city council, $121,000 or something, is some of that, does some of that roll over from the previous year, or do we spend it all, or what is it spent on? What happens there?
If you have, if you have open purchase orders, we'll carry that across into the new year so that when that bill comes due, the remainder of that money is available and not charged against the wrong year, you know?
And I'm talking about that $121, so...
If you're asking what $121,000 buys you, the majority of the city council budget is for the annual audit that is conducted on city financials, and the remainder for meals, employee appreciation luncheon, travel, that's the majority of what's in that budget.
Okay. And I didn't know whether there was an ending balance, or, you know, it just happens to be the same amount that it was last year, so I didn't know what.
That's how we set targets, absent of salary changes. Everybody's budget is exactly the same it was in prior years, plus or minus any salary changes, and target increase requests. So, since there are no salary changes to the city council budget, there are no changes proposed in that budget.
And there were no carryovers into this year's budget.
That's what I want. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wardlaw, go through your...
Okay.
I'll go through your deductions.
Okay. Hopefully, this will expedite the process, and what I've handed you is sort of a discussion draft of what we've been looking at here, and of course, it's at the end of our draft budget where it says invite you to build your own scenario. I want to go through some of these fast and see if we can cut these out and have more items, more money to spend or leave for contingencies. Item number one, workers' comp incentive, $220,000. That's never appeared in any recent budgets before, in my opinion. This was the brainchild of one former city council member who lost the election, is no longer with us. So, I don't think it carries as much weight, but even more importantly than that, most people in the insurance business will tell you that workers' comp incentives are not the best way to go about getting your loss ratio down. It has to do with management from the department handling that, making sure that the supervisors and the work crew supervisors, department heads require all of their employees to follow all the mandated and set out safety rules, and I think, I just don't like the idea of coming up with this incentive, because I think it's a waste of taxpayer money. As I said, it was one person's brainchild, and I don't think, I think he was wrong. So, any discussions of that before I move on? I'll just run through all these. Next is cellphone increase, $63,000. All of these numbers that I have in items one through four are increases in over the 2013... 2013 budget, they're not, they're not, and so, when you take these items out, if we do, that means that the budget will be left where it was in the prior year. So, you got cell phone increases, 63,000, the visitors bureau increase, 100,000. I think that, that looks to me like that was something that might have come up with the, the prior council who was involved in these budget proceedings, and that was one of their priorities. I would call everybody's attention that we just gave a generous contribution to the visitor center, I believe, on their, their rotten beams and, and provided them money. I don't think we need to do this, we give the Chamber of Commerce plenty of money as it is, and, you know, this, this money could come from the Chamber of Commerce if they need an increase, or it also could come out of the Costa DC budget. And then last, item number four is 63,000 art council increase, that sounds to me like some members of the prior council talked somebody into putting that in the budget, that's about 100% increase from what their budget was in 2012. Then moving on down, meet and confer, I plugged that in, fire debt service, number two, number three, firefighters, we just got through talking about, which I thought was a compression issue, but is an increase that we found out a minute ago was actually 240,000, but I rounded these off to some extent. Then employees' salaries, 400,000, that's down from 600,000 that was plugged into the budget by the employees themselves and the staff, 400,000 increase over last year, that would end, that would be on the basis of a 2% across-the-board increase rather than a 3% increase. I will make several points along the lines here. Two years ago, the employees got an across-the-board 3.5% increase based on the information that we were provided, and last year, a 1.25% increase from the same information, so that's nearly 5% increase over the last two years. I, I think a 3% increase is much higher from what, than what I've seen around the state. Most of the towns that I've seen are giving a 1 to 1.5% increase, and I've, I've seen just a few that have given 2% increase, but not anything higher than that, so I'm recommending that we save 200,000 there. And then five was in the prior itemization that we just talked about. Item number six is a possible 1% tax rate decrease, 370,000. Ms. Farmer tells me, and I knew this was, to some extent was the case, the city's been on a program trying to obtain a 1% rate decrease for a number of years, and Ms. Farmer can probably elaborate on that in a minute, but I, I would point out several things. Number one, because of the oil boom, we've had a lot of reappraisals, it's about 40 million dollars of reappraisals of property, and, you know, a person sitting out there in their residence is not getting any more benefit out of their property as a result of the oil boom and the reappraisal of their property, so this would give these folks a, a break from their reappraisals to some extent, not 100% of course. And another thing I would like to mention is that our tax rates here in the city of San Angelo have been in the top two or three in the state for the last 20 some odd years. We're way higher than everybody else, the, the typical tax rate in the state of Texas runs from about 44 to 48 cents per hundred, and we're at 78 cents, so that's more than 50% higher than most of the other towns in the state. It was kind of funny, I was out there at the appraisal district the other day talking to somebody trying to do some homework on this, and a guy had moved here from Fort Stockton a few years ago, and he said, "Well, I really liked living in San Angelo," but he said, "Our tax rates here are brutal," and he was at the appraisal district. So, that's what I'm proposing there. And then, then last is the Fairmount Colomberia for 316,000. And if you'll note above, we got 446,000 in possible cuts that could be made, and then also, the 200,000 that I just mentioned on employees' salaries is a decrease, which would be a total of 646,000, and I know other, some other people have other cuts, but anyway, that's just my thoughts on this matter, and I do have one question. In the solid waste enterprise fund, it looks like there's an increase in the budget of 835,000 in professional services from last year, and I believe you need to elaborate on that for the purpose, for the benefit of the council.
Yes, sir, I can certainly let Mr. Kelton come up and speak to the detail of that, but last year we levied additional landfill fees to be implemented, do you want me to...
Let Shane answer, please.
We are expecting another fee increase that we did go into last year to account for the additional monies. Those monies have been put into professional services as we were looking and preparing, not knowing council's direction, as we move forward into the end of the contract, original contract with Republic Services, we have some expenses that were expected going into the end of the contract, and that's what these funds were put in there for, mostly for the construction of a new cell, and a new cell's running 1 to 1.2 million.
Okay, so professional services does not mean to, to the council that, that's not salaries or anything?
No, sir, that's, that's contracted out services for the construction of the new cell.
Okay, Shane, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Lisa, you want to talk to this workers' comp incentive, or someone?
Absolutely, the workers' comp does fall under the Human Resources and Risk Department. In 2007, it may have been 2008, that was the last year that we paid a safety incentive bonus to our employees. We have, since 2008, the safety coordinator position has been created to try to get better at our numbers on workers' comp, and we've seen a dramatic increase, or a dramatic increase, improvement in the numbers. We have a safety committee, and they have met with a representative from every department in the city, and they asked if they could entertain another safety incentive program to the employees. They revamped it, they've made it a little bit different, the workers' comp fund did have, they didn't ask for an addition to their target, they cut out some of their other things in order to create that, and that's where, where it came from.
Well, you know, it is debatable whether or not these programs are effective, and I don't think it's necessarily a question that has to be decided today. There has, there were departments where that program in the past has been effective, and there are departments that seemed relatively ineffective by, unaffected by those incentives, and so, I think it is a mixed bag, I think we would be open to a discussion about what is effective and what is in the public's best interest, and...
Well, I think she just made my argument a minute ago, that they revamped the, the department, and they, they've got more supervision over the program, and, and that's worked, and that's, that's my experience, and that's what my experts tell me is the most effective thing to do, not giving out more, more money, and so, anyway, I, I want to make a decision on that today, but we'll see what everybody else wants to do.
Thank you.
Let's talk about this visitors bureau increase.
Um...
Yeah, this, well, visitors bureaus, what, what...
Is that, is that...
Visitor Center.
Mayor...
Huh?
Shall I, shall I talk about it?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor, as we lead into this, I'd, I'd like to talk about the sheet itself that was handed out. First of all, it's spreadsheet-style document, I love it, it, it hits right home with me, and I think we should talk about these items, but some of these items are not going to have an impact directly on the general fund. And so, from that perspective, for example, this item, the visitor's center or visitors' bureau increase, we do have a contract with the Convention and Visitors Bureau for an amount of money for which they provide services. We went from a methodology where the ordinance called for an allocation based on percentages to a contract for a firm amount. That new budget amount is probably higher than the old budget amount, and that's probably, Mr. Wardlaw, is that what you saw when you spotted this 100,000?
This is totally increased from last year. Yes, sir.
And so, we can certainly discuss that contract and the merits of what they provide versus what it costs, however, a change in that won't make a difference in the general fund, because that comes out of occupancy taxes. And so, good discussion that we ought to have, however, it does not affect the general fund, and so, the chamber, or the CVB and chamber representatives who we, who helped us execute that contract invited more participation and feedback from council in the operation associated with that contract, and I think they'd love to meet with council and see what council's priorities are. I think it's a good discussion to have here with council, and the allocation, the actual dollars they will receive will be less than they received last year, because they were getting a percentage of a fast-growing pie, and now they're going to get the same amount whether that pie doubles in size or only grows a small amount.
Michael, I'm not disputing what you just said about the effect of this, but I, I, why, why is it included in the draft budget that you furnished us?
It's a...
That's where this, this information came from.
Certainly. The, the budget includes multiple funds, there is the general fund where taxes and activities not required to be accounted for in separate funds exists. For example, there is the civic events fund where we account for occupancy tax activity and activity associated with operation of city venues. And so, those different funds, we have, some, that isolates that, that financial activity into those funds, so it is a, I'm certainly not suggesting that it's not a valid, it's certainly a valid topic, the question is, does it have an impact on the general fund? And, and it does not have an impact on the general fund, because it exists in that other fund.
Would that be the same thing for the arts council, is that hotel funds as well?
It is. But, as we look down that sheet, for example, workers' comp question, that exists in the, in, in a self-insurance fund, so that's not general fund either. The cell phone increases, I would imagine that, that Mr. Wardlaw saw increases in the detail that, that he saw, and, and would like to roll that back, that, to the extent that he pulled detail from across multiple funds, that could have an impact on the general fund. I do have good news in the, in the expenditure section, though, he has Fairmount Colomberia listed for 316,000. We have, that, that certainly can come from those general fund, normal revenues and expenditures, that, that certainly can happen. We do have a portion of the general fund expenditures set aside for capital expenditures, and so, while some of these funding sources at the top of the sheet don't necessarily create general fund capacity, number seven at the, on the bottom half of the sheet, that Fairmount Colomberia, could be funded from that general fund capital money that is a portion of the general fund budget. Recall that there is 1.75 million in the general fund that we've set aside for cash pay for capital. We've talked about dedicating a quarter of a million that each year for fire trucks, that leaves approximately 1.5 million that has not been dedicated in one fashion or another, and that Fairmount Colomberia project, that phase one of that project could come from those dollars. And so, while there are items in the top half that won't have that positive general fund impact, there's certainly an item at the bottom that could, could utilize a, a funding source that doesn't rely on those top, the top half of the page, so, nice work.
Is the capital fund, is that on the agenda for discussion today?
It is absolutely available for discussion today.
Okay.
And we can make as much or as little progress on that as you'd like.
Well, I, I, I think, I think we need to discuss each fund at the separate, separate time, not all together, across, discuss them.
That, that is a challenge. Morgan, how many funds would you say there are?
In excess of two dozen. This is hard to read, and I apologize, but...
The key is, the general fund is where the taxes exist, it's where the tightest financial situations exist, and it's where the bulk of our decisions lie, and so, the general fund is typically where the bulk of the time is spent. And so, with that in mind, when we have restricted time with council, we tend to focus on the general fund, unless we have significant issues in other funds that need to be addressed.
Is there any, any other comments from council on this? Johnny?
Well, it's, is it safe, like you're saying, is it safe to say that if, if we leave this 100,000 alone for the visitor, I mean, it doesn't impact the general fund anyway, is that correct? I mean, you're talking about it comes from hot monies.
You're correct, it does not affect the general fund, but if it is a valid topic for council, it can be discussed today or another day, as you decide, whether it, whether or not it has an impact on the general fund, it's still, if it's a, if it's a priority for council, it can, it can come back. We can schedule some meetings with CVB representatives, so we can go through exactly what that contract is to provide, and count what council's expectations are, we built in there a, a plan for quarterly meetings with CVB representatives and council representatives, so that we could have that closer communication about the, about that function. So, I think they, they have said before that they welcome that interaction, and are, are ready to attempt to address council's priorities.
Michael, remind me why they refunded us that 300,000, what, what happened?
Good, good point. Recall that I talked about the, in the prior arrangement, the ordinance which controlled the dispersment of occupancy taxes was based on percentages, so as our occupancy taxes rose dramatically, we saw a spike in those collections, we were distributing all of those in accordance with those ratios or those percentages in that ordinance. So, they collected approximately, or we distributed to them approximately a million dollars in the last full fiscal year, I think is what that was, when their own budget was closer to 700 or 800,000. So, as those occupancy tax collections were growing, we were distributing in accordance with the ordinance, and that is somewhat what led the previous council to say, "We want a tighter grip on that, we want better accountability for that, we don't just want to send those out." And so, they told us contract for, for a certain amount, not for an allocation, and so, the contract calls for excess occupancy taxes to be returned to the city when the contract year is complete. Well, they had accumulated an excess amount, and they returned that to us in accordance with that contract, and that was approximately 331,000.
In finishing that microphone, I would, I would suggest, with our general budget...
Your microphone, Mr.?
Excuse me. In moving on, in, in dealing with the general budget, I would propose in finishing up my presentation, I'd, I'd like to open it up to employees' salaries, because that's the, sort of the last, next, about the next to last item that's on, on my list here, and may be one of the most important or the one that may take the longest, so, I would open it up for that, and I've talked about decreasing the salaries from 3% to 2% across the board, and I'd like to hear what everybody else says, I think other people have got other ideas.
I've got ideas on it, but I'll wait and let everybody else talk first, so who wants to go first?
I'll go right down.
Take off, Don.
Like I said at the last meeting, I kind of wanted to, to hit the bottom and bring those up some. My, my way, my method to the madness, I guess, is, is looking at anything that was less than, than 40,000, and perhaps giving them a bit more than what Winky had proposed on the 2%, but if we can, can take that from the top and transfer it to the bottom, I have, have no problem with that. I also have talked to Lisa about some of the ones that, that really stuck out to me, and, and part of those are... part of those are the non-certified, I mean, the non-civil service peace officers, the certified peace officers that aren't civil service, which there's not that much discrepancy there in bringing those up. Lisa, do you know how much that would take?
Actually, the judge created that spreadsheet, and I don't have a copy of it, but I think he's here and I can take a look.
Okay. And then, while he's up here, I was also looking at the clerks. I was fortunate enough to work in municipal court before I received this good-paying position, so I know what those clerks go through, and it's a pretty tough job sometimes, so.
Okay, thank you. On the clerks, when we were talking about the clerks, when the judge and I were talking about the deputy court clerks and the deputy court clerk senior, there's been legislation that's been passed that is going to require them to keep up with a little over 90 more laws than what they presently do. And the more we discuss these positions, the more we realize that it's not so much that the pay range for those positions needs to be upgraded, but that the positions themselves need to be upgraded. They are in grade 10s, the other grade 10s are okay, but I think what I'm finding is that the actual position of deputy court clerk and deputy clerk senior, court clerk seniors are in need of being upgraded to a different grade. So, in order to do that, the cost to the city, including benefits, is almost $34,000 for those positions. As far as the marshals go, the cost that the judge has come up with on that is $17,600 for changing those city marsh, the deputy city marshals to get them in line with the police officer roles and rank.
Now, you also have to in the fire marshal's position, but they probably aren't that far off, so we could probably round that figure maybe to $20,000, say, or something like that.
I think that probably would be pretty accurate. I didn't pull those since we keep them in a separate pay system, but yes.
And then, along with that, I was also concerned with the dispatchers. Here again, my thinking on that is, we have around $100,000 in expenditure in overtime. What my thinking on that is, if we get those up to a higher pay grade also, maybe we won't have the turnover. I know you and I talked about how long, once again, kind of like what the judge had, as far as a problem in that training them and then having them work 12-hour shifts several days in a row to make up for the people that aren't there. And then, we also pull in occasionally people, our police officers off the street and have them dispatch also. My thinking on that was, if we can take some of the monies that we're spending for overtime and put that into salaries, get these people trained and maintained in that position, I think that we would still come out ahead because it would reduce the amount of overtime that we have.
In theory, that sounds correct. I think raising the salaries is only part of the problem, and I don't think it needs to be raised as much as you think. We have plenty of applicants to become dispatchers. The difficulty comes with how long it takes to place them. The training is very intense and takes a long time, and I think it's a combination of both. I certainly think their salaries do need to be raised, and again, it would be a lot like with the court clerk's positions where they should be upgraded. Because if you look at those listing of positions, the emergency services dispatchers are in a grade 13, I think it is, and there's other jobs in the grade 13 that don't necessarily need to be increased because their responsibilities are not increasing. So, I would, instead of changing all the 13s, we would just elect to move those into a different grade. I don't have any idea what we'd be talking in terms of money. I could probably put something together pretty quickly and let you know how many people are in there and what that cost would be, but right off the top of my head, I would say you'd probably be looking at 40, $40,000 to $50,000.
Once again, if we could figure out a way of doing that and reducing the overtime by 50%, it would pay for itself. So, you know...
Well, just keep in mind, if we raise the salaries, it's not going to make more of them come to work every day. It's not going to mean positions are filled right away. We're still going to have that training requirement, and we're still going to have vacancies, so the overtime is still going to be necessary until enough people can be brought through the system.
Right, absolutely. I understand. One of the other things that Dwayne, I know, had mentioned before was a living wage, and that's why I was looking at the bottom end of our pay range so much. I know in talking with Mr. Dixon and Shane, they were talking about, you know, perhaps losing an entire crew, and I'm not silly enough to think that we can compete with the oil field, but by the same token, if we can make a good wage for these people to where we can get our projects completed, it's not going to do any good for us to have money for the projects and not have the manpower to do it. So, you know, that's why I took the philosophy that I did on it.
I was reading.
Charlotte, may I just ask something, follow up with this? The 911 dispatchers, you talked about the intensive training, how long is that, and how many vacancies do we still have? How many do we have today?
I didn't pull today's vacancies, but I would imagine it's still sitting around five or six. I haven't signed off on any new hires in the dispatcher area, so I don't think that number's changed since the last time we talked. If the chief is here, he could probably tell you more extensively how long that training takes.
Because however long that training took, it's still like having, the positions are still vacant, so.
The training is about six months. We do it in stages. Call-taking is the first phase, being sure that they can answer phone calls. There's so many that come in to be able to enter that information, so they have to sit with somebody through that process, they sit with somebody through the entire process. And then, we move them to Channel 3 or lighter channel, Order Fire, and they spend some time working the fire channel, and then they spend some time on the Channel 3 area, and then they go to the primary channel. And so, it does take some time. And there's evaluation processes throughout that whole process. Right now, the way the program's designed is if they can't do any of those jobs, if there's one job they cannot do, they don't stay employed with dispatch.
How many vacancies do you have now?
It's probably about six, but we probably have about six or seven that are in training, which is almost, that would put us with the vacancies, about half staff, half of the staff at the current time is in training.
Okay, I, like what both of them said, don't have any huge issues with it, with the exception of previous councils. That's tough to gauge when you come in. Well, I don't care what previous council has said. Well, you know, you don't know the fires that they had to fight and put out and go through to make the decisions that they made. So, I do want to take into consideration, you know, some previous council, for instance, the capital improvement plan, you know, that was not in our charter and that, you know, good positive things have come about. There are some things that I particularly would like to see as cut, and I'll start off with car allowances. You know, as you give things, you've got to give up a few things. And for eight years, 10 years, the city has worked on increasing the low salaries that the city has been historic for. And I ask you to provide a range, you know, where we were at that living range to me, and we have brought that up considerably from the 60, 70 percenters that we had, and that's giving something, but you need to give up. And the car allowances, I just don't feel that, that's a privilege, it's an amenity that is long gone. You know, bank officers don't even get cars anymore. They just don't. That is something that you earn, and if you're willing to do the paperwork and turn in a mileage report, I mean, you won't be gaining a lot of money, but it's a different perspective on how that money is spent. And I would like to see as this budget totally cut out car allowances as an automatic giving, and I'm going to get $650 a month plus my salary. And when you look at just salaries, that car allowance and that cost of the insurance and stuff is not in there to what they're actually earning. So, that's an area that I really want to consider. And I had asked Michael last week, because I had looked in the last two years' blue books and could not find what the nature center was costing the city to operate. And the reason I asked that even further is a comment, you know, was made, well, its income and expense is just really negligible to the budget. And I'm sure that is, but when you look at the condition of the nature center inside and out, the high volume of traffic, I just wonder if the same thing could be accomplished like we're handling the water education and stuff like that instead of operating an off-site, separate location for the nature center. And there, again, not having any numbers in the budget to look at for the last, it's just, it says zero. Well, you've got employees out there, you've got overhead, you've got feed or food that, you know, has to be provided. So, I would like to definitely take a look at possibly reallocating where that process, that education process could and should be handled better than its standalone item out there. And another item that has really bothered me, and Dwayne, I'm going to ask you to help me remember here, because I know about six, seven years ago, we really hammered the city pretty hard on the pilot funds, that we wanted to do away with that, that's payment in lieu of taxes. And I think Dwayne and Johnny and I really campaigned hard for that, and council would along with it, and it was reported back to us that, you know, it took them, we gave them, I think, three years to get rid of that pilot fund. And we were very proud of them that they came back in something like a year and 10 months and told us that that had been done away with. I was very, very sad to read and look in here, all we did away with was the water pilot fund. There's still the sewer wastewater pilot fund and this pilot fund, and I'd like an explanation on that, why we didn't gradually try to eliminate all those when council had asked that it be done.
Charlotte, excuse me, I think some people need an explanation of what the pilot fund is, including the public.
Good question, both, good questions. First of all, there's not a pilot fund. There is a payment in lieu of taxes. Years ago, the city was making straight transfers from water and sewer funds into the general fund, and that was about the time that privatization became an industry buzzword. And during that time, they started to characterize or consider what the impact, the financial impact would be if those operations were privatized and the new owners, those private owners began paying taxes on those assets. Because that was the, my understanding is, this is in the early and mid-'90s, I think, they began, they re-characterized those transfers as payment in lieu of taxes and began to collect them from those funds based on the net value of the assets as if they were paying taxes. And at some point, that became an issue at council. Council said, we're not, we're no longer in favor of that, and I believe that was when Harold was here, and council directed staff to discontinue that in the water fund. And so, that's what we followed up with. And Harold and I had several conversations about other, about the sewer fund and whether a payment in lieu of taxes reduction or discontinuance should occur in the sewer fund, and he said we were directed to do it in the water fund. We're going to get it done in the water fund, and we will worry about the sewer fund when it becomes an issue. And so, there have been small decreases that we've tried to implement in the transfer from the sewer fund, but at that time, we were given direction not to pursue the same kind of three-year plan in the sewer fund that we did in the water fund.
Well, I don't remember that.
So, how much, excuse me, how much is being transferred?
$500,000.
How much?
$500,000 from the sewer fund to the general fund.
Well, let me just explain one other...
Well, I'm not finished. But I would like for everyone to understand what the pilot fund is and does, and I'm not as good at explaining as the rest of you maybe are.
Well, the problem was, back when this was discovered, the pilot was not even known to the city council at the time it was discovered, and where you had multiple funds involved in the pilot program, you could look and see from one year to another, they were moving funds around to avoid increasing taxes on the citizens, pulling funds from sewer and the water, and you could see from year to year, there was no consistency or rationale to it. He was just moving funds around from one place to another, and that's just not good management, and the city council didn't know that it was going on. And even Wiley Webb, our auditor, didn't know it was going on, and, you know, it's just not a good thing.
Well, that's, you know, I don't recall it being just the water fund. I don't recall giving instructions to only do it on the water fund. It may be, I'm just saying I didn't recall that. But it is something that is real irritant to our citizens out there, that, you know, the taxes that are there and how the money was being done. So, that's what we had requested that it be done, it be done away with. And I would like to request it at this time forward. I really and truly, the property tax, it's not just because we made a commitment to do this over 10 years to get it down at least 10 cents, and I realize we're a little ahead of the schedule on that, but by the same token, we are one of the highest in the state, and our salary levels and incomes are not up there with the highest in the state. And this year, we're getting an extra $564,000, $67,000 in property taxes. There's always been an increase in that amount that we've been receiving, and it just seems that the mindset with the staff is, we get more money, let's spend more money. And if you'll recall, last year, District 5 and myself, we didn't approve the budget because we didn't want that just to continue, we're getting more money, so let's spend more money. You know, we have got to tighten our belts. The real situation, we're probably more than likely going to be forced, if the drought continues like it is, to start buying water, that we have to buy water from somewhere at a price that we're going to be forced to pay, and where are we going to get the money to buy water for our citizens? Money needs to be set aside now for that contingency. I hate to think where we're going to be when that happens, but you know, by setting a goal and a steady pace to accomplish that goal, you realize that things in the city cannot be changed overnight or in one year or two years. And that's the reason I respect the efforts of some council members is to sticking with that goal to gradually do it so that you just don't rip things wide open. I have to mention, the calls that I've been getting, they were confused, they thought we were the county as well, and they were, you know, telling me that they work for a very good company here in San Angelo, very good pay raise, scale, pay scale, but 13 years or 15 years and 20 years with that company, in the last five years, they've not received a salary increase at all, not even a cost of living. We have turned around and changed the low pay for the city. You know, I want to point out that in some of these ranges that I looked at, I was kind of surprised, for instance, the fire recruiter, the fireman, excuse me, the probationary police officer, always before in years past, that probationary police officer and that fire probationary fighter has always been the same, and the same amount, and I understood that, but now, the probationary police officer starts out starting salary at $36,853. But now, the probationary police officer starts out, starting salary at 36,853 dollars a year, which to me, that's, that's a pretty good salary. And the firefighter now gets 35,954. The firefighter has decreased down, and I don't know how that happened. Uh, I would like an explanation of it. But also, when you look at a, um, I'll just pick on the police deputy chiefs, uh, you know, they've got a range that, uh, is from 90,000 to 96,000 plus a year and a car allowance that adds up. Well, you know, those are over, with the car allowances, over a hundred thousand dollars a year. And it's not a bad salary for San Angelo. Yes, I, I think they should go up, but I have to weigh that against the performance and where in looking at the municipal courts, uh, reports, is the decrease in tickets, uh, overall things that has taken and lowered our bottom line. Uh, explanations on that are, are definitely needed, uh, it, to me, anyway. And then I am curious about things. I see a title of director of water utilities, water utilities assistant director, a, uh, water utilities engineering manager, a water wastewater district collection superintendent, a water treatment superintendent, a water reclamation superintendent, a water quality superintendent. Okay. How many people do we have, employees we have in that department that aren't a supervisor or superintendent? And by the way, those salaries, you know, minimum 50,085 a year, all the way up to 75,128 a year.
Would you like us to get somebody up to answer those questions?
Are you sure?
I'll answer the first one, um, which was the fire, uh, the probationary firefighter and the probationary police officer. And the, the difference between those two ranks has everything to do with meet and confer, and that's it. Meet and confer, raise their ranges. And as we've had funding available outside of meet and confer to keep fire, uh, close, that's as close as we could get with the funding that we had. So that, if you notice, they're very close. Um, let's see, it, you said it's 35,9 for the firefighter probationary and 36,8. So, I mean, they are less than a thousand dollars apart. So that was the best that we could do with the funding that we had last year when we did the ranges. And, um, I'm gonna let Ricky Dixon.
Let's get Ricky to tell us what those different superintendents do. And Charlotte, we'd like to.
Either one of them.
Did you have a question about police?
Mm-hmm.
Let me hear your question, again, please.
Well, the question was.
The first one was, go ahead.
As we've increased steadily, say, salaries for the police, but those car allowances have never changed. They're still locked in up there at those amounts. And that's, you multiply that out per month, if you get 650 dollars a month, you'll have times a 12, that's on top of that salary. And we've not seen any give up or reduction in that. And I, I would like to see the car allowances done away with in this budget year.
If I may, I'll address that first. Uh, our car allowances have been the same since, since we've taken office. I believe my assistants are 375 and mine's 450. Uh, mine is not 650.
That's what it says it is.
It's not 650. I've never received 650. That was the city manager's car allowance, but it was never my car allowance, not the current city manager.
Four, Lisa, 450 or 470?
470, 450, but it's not 650.
420 for the chief?
No, 420 for assistant.
420 for assistants and then 450 for me, somewhere around there is what it is.
470.
470. So I haven't had 650. I will say that for many years, I have written memos and I have asked to give my car allowance back and take a take-home car, because I have saved the city thousands of dollars, thousands of dollars, by having a car allowance. I pay an increased insurance because it's a work vehicle. I, uh, I've owned my vehicle now for a few, probably about three and a half years, and I have put 50,000 miles on that vehicle. But the majority of that vehi- majority of mileage is with the city. Now, I will be more than happy to charge the city 55 cents per mile, because I'll make bank doing that. And if that's what we prefer, that would be fine as well. Uh, that's why we haven't really changed it. It's been one of those things that, that I think when we took it before Harold, Harold realized the cost savings for the city by giving us the car allowance and keeping it that way. And, and that's why it's been the way it's been.
Chief, my reason for bringing it up is there was no discussion from the councils on this as to what we would like to do, et cetera, and so forth. We're here at the budget time and this is all my only opportunity to bring it up.
I'd ask for an increase. And I've been asking for either a take-home car or an increase.
Well, I, and what I'm comparing it to is, is there's just not any other jobs out there that I'm aware of that people get paid to drive back and forth to work. And that's what it amounts to is.
Sure, sure. Well, that's not, that's not, I can assure you, that's not the only place.
Well, didn't have the opportunity to discuss it, verify it and prove it out, but that's, that's why I bring it up.
Okay. And, and if you'd like, I've, I've got notebooks, I keep my mileage. Uh, I've done that every year since I became chief. I've got my tax returns that I'd be more than happy to show you if you'd wanted to see that as well. And I probably have my memo saved in my documents on my desktop to show you the cost savings for the city, because I've studied this every year and it's become a topic. And I've asked for an increase every year or a take-home car, and it's always been denied.
But I also did a comparison of, I didn't do it, I asked Ms. Marley to do it for me, a, a comparison of our benchmark cities is to which cities give car allowances and which are doing or completely done away with them. And almost every one of them on the list have done away with car allowances. And they've had to do it because of tightening times. People want more salaries, people want more of their insurance premium paid. There's just all kinds of human resource things that go into that today.
Did, uh, did you also ask if, if they were providing take-home vehicles for the administration?
Yes, and I have the survey and that's what I've studied and, and looked at.
Uh, I think the next thing you, you mentioned, you mentioned something about, uh, performance measures.
Yes, mm-hmm.
Um, I'm, I'm gonna try to be as, as, uh, politically correct as, as I can.
Oh, I know what you're going to say.
Yeah. The San Angelo Police Department is not a revenue generating business. And I don't tell my officers to write tickets.
Understand that.
They go out and it's their discretion whether to write one or not to write one. If the numbers are down, then the numbers are down. Uh, TSP, I've said this for the last several years, asking for an increase in TSP, that is a generating, there's a lot of revenue that's generated in that program. And you saw today, it was 209,000, and it's been 209,000 for many, many years. So as salaries have gone up, uh, in that program, overtime hours have gone down. So we've seen a large, a significant decrease because of that, I would say. Uh, secondly, I would, uh, I don't think that, uh, that my performance, uh, should be evaluated based off how many citations my guys write. I think my performance.
I didn't say that.
Okay, well, you mentioned performance evaluation and, and the money not coming in, you know, our decrease in crime and what we do with the amount of people that we have and in the building you keep us in or we stay in, I think my, the men and women of the San Angelo Police Department have done an outstanding job. And our performance is, is, exceeds most of the state. Our clearance rate is one, one of the best in the state as far as crimes, and our crime rate deduction, uh, reduction is probably the same.
What I'm trying to say when I say that, talk about the performance and how it's down from previous years, to give increases or to consider, you've gotta look at the overall whole picture. If, if the income producing part of it is 47% less than it was before, needs to be a conversation amongst the council though, so that they can understand why it is that much less and we're looking at doing increases, new vehicles. It's, it's with anything, you have to look at the overall picture and that's why I mentioned that.
Absolutely. And, and the fact that you asked for, uh, benchmarks, our benchmarks on take-home and those type of things, uh, I think one of the other questions would be is, when you look at our benchmark cities, what percentage of their general fund is put towards public safety in comparison to San Angelo? And I think you'll see San Angelo is normally rated lower in the percentage of our general fund that we put towards public safety, not just police, public safety in general. That being said, uh, it makes us feel that the priorities, uh, for certain cities where their salaries are higher is because they put more focus on public safety. And we do have a lot of projects and we do have a lot of things going on. We're addressing the streets, we're addressing the water issue, but I don't believe we're addressing public safety.
Chief, and thank you. And I, I really respect the job that the police and the fire do. Uh, and I want them to be comparable to other places. But without line item workshops that we have had.
In the past.
The, in the past, it is very hard to make these decisions if we've not been able, the seven of us, to sit down and discuss what makes this up and to hear, hear from the supervisors and out there.
I will say that in regards to your citations, that was an issue that came up a couple of years ago. Uh, there's been a steady decrease over years, but that was something that's occurred in, in cities across the state of Texas. Uh, the metroplex area had quite a significant decrease, millions of dollars lost in the general fund budget because of decreasing in citations. It's either the new officers we're hiring or not wanting to write citations. It could have been when we went through the recession, uh, they were more compassionate when it came to writing citations. I can't tell you why, uh, that's occurred.
Thank you, chief. I appreciate it. I just have one thing that I wanna say, and I'm through with my, my portion that I have looked at, hope I hadn't forgotten anything. But if you look in the job description for the city council, our job description is, we set the budget, we prepare the budget. And I was unhappy last year, and I'm unhappy this year, that, uh, the budget has been prepared and submitted by staff. You've looked at what you want to have in your, the toys and, under your Christmas tree, and this is what you want, and, uh, given a summary to council. And to me, that's, that's poor decision-making on the council's part if we're not going to look at the light item and let us make our recommendations and not let staff be setting the budget and making the recommendations. That's council's job. Thank you.
Ricky, do you want to answer her questions as well?
Can I say something to the, about the police issue? As we're going through these things, this thing's gonna, I can already see it's gonna last a long time.
Yeah, we're here to.
And let's, let's just put this to bed about ta- the car take-home thing. I think, let's just ask, are there any other one of us up here that wanna, you're saying go through it line by line, I'm saying, let's do it. Let's say, is, is there anybody else up here that's in favor of taking away their cars? I am not.
Now, you're talking about car allowance.
Their car allowance.
Yeah. Well, I was until the chief said that it was actually saving the city money to pay them. I would like to see some proof on that.
Well, I, I personally don't think you can just arbitrarily one year and say, we're gonna do away with them. We can do away with them through attrition, but to come in and, and, and to tell, to, to tell our employees that, uh, we're fixing to cut your salary by X number of dollars, uh, I, I don't think that's, uh, fair and I don't think that's a good thing to do. Now, you know, if we wanna look at it through attrition, then, then we can do that, but I, I think that's the only fair and honest way of doing it.
And then, I don't, you know, they can still be reimbursed for their mileage. So if they're driving the miles that the chief says they're driving, and he said that if he were turning in a mileage sheet, he would actually be getting more money. So if it is true that they're driving more miles than what the car allowance pays and they can be reimbursed, and there's, there's another thing. So I'm not, I, I don't know that they would be losing salary.
But why don't we do like Marty's saying, as, as their jobs come up and we hire new people to replace them, just, you're basically making them take a decrease in pay and just right here at this meeting.
Well, it depends. If the, if the reimbursement is more than the car allowance, they would not be taking it.
But just like you said, the rate hasn't been increasing forever, so they're, I, they're saving us money. So in the long run, I, I, I bet you if this comes out, they're saving us money.
But not seeing the documentation, it's hard to make that decision.
I'd like to see some figures on that.
And we've been trying for eight years.
But you're cut, you're wanting to cut this without seeing any documentation.
But you're saying this is new. And for eight years, I have hammered on this, because when I got on council, it was 444,000 dollars a year. Today, it's 109. We have been cutting it through our tr- our attrition, but that's how long it's, it's taking. And we talk about this every year.
Well, I think we have a lot of other issues we need to talk about besides this. We need to get, get through all these things and it's gonna take.
I respect your issues, but I would like to have mine respected as well. Thank you.
And I told you, my feelings on yours, I don't agree.
Ricky, go ahead and answer her questions while, while you've got the floor, please.
Okay. Charlotte, would you, what I, run that question by me again.
I mean, going through all of those supervisors and whatnot, cover.
Okay. Um, I'll run the numbers while I was sitting there, listened to the chief a little bit. Water Utilities Division has off-the-bench reports that I have available, 150 positions, 150 people that I am responsible for. The superintendents that you mentioned, um, engineering managers, nine, nine positions that's under that gentleman, accountant himself, um, three staff engineers, inspectors, uh, engineering coordinator, senior engineering, design tech, water production plant, right, skipped one, no. Water production plant, that's Charles McGuire, he's the water treatment superintendent. There's 12 positions over there that run 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, so we can treat your water and it'll have acceptable water to drink according to the TCQ rules and regulations. The water quality lab that.
Ricky, let me, in, in the interest of time, since, uh, I guess I'm the only one that's interested in it, you don't have any departments where you have a supervisor that there's only two people that do that kinda work and one's your supervisor?
No.
So you're, what you're telling me is you've got 100 people, maybe under one supervisor, 50 people under another, and that's, that's what these are. There's the most of the city staff that those work in these divisions.
Correct.
You've answered my question.
Johnny, you're gonna be next, but I need to stretch my back. Let's take a few minutes. It's 3:44, let's reconvene. Let's see, word we le- we left off with Johnny Silva, Marty, Mr. Fleming and myself. Go.
Okay, mayor, thank you. Let me just first say that, uh, Marty has cookies in for, for everyone here, so.
If anybody needs one, holler at me. And as the meeting goes later, I would just like to say they'll cost more.
I guess, I guess I just wanted to touch base on the, uh, on, on the salary, uh, increase that we're talking about. I'm looking at the position classifications sheet. And now, these aren't all the positions or they are, because I'm seeing like grade six, there's one, one person at a grade six? No. There's more than one.
Well.
There's more than.
That's a, that's a title at that grade. There may be multiple people in that, in that. Lisa, thank you. Would you help us, please?
That's just the title and pay level for that pay grade. Is that correct?
Well, as it so happens, the custodian that is the grade six, there is just one of those in the city. But all the rest of the titles have multiple incumbents in those classifications, for the most part. I mean, you're only gonna have one superintendent, one city manager, one director, but all the rest of them are multiples, yes.
But if we hit something like, uh, patrolmen, policemen or.
Mm-hmm. There'll be 155 of those, right.
There might be multiple people in that.
Correct.
Does that answer?
Mm-hmm, yeah. And really, I'm gonna keep my comments just real simple, because I'm looking at, again, you know, and I like what Don is saying and some other folks are saying, that we need to certainly, uh, keep and, and, uh, and watch after the folks on the, on the bottom end of the totem pole, so to speak. But you know, I'm looking at grade six, seven, eight, and six, seven, eight, nine and 10. You know, my, my, uh, I guess what I would be interested in doing is, if we can bump those grade levels up as far as pay scale, I'm, I'm, the ne- the next pay grade is 12, you know, it's at, the minimum is 23,000. So, you know, I'm saying that we could, what it would, what would it do to the budget? What would it do to our numbers if we bumped those up to, all those up to even a $20,000 minimum grade, uh, uh, pay scale is, is what I'd be interested in. And then from then, then on, if there is any, uh, funds left over, then we, we can, you know, I, and I wanna be careful what I'm saying, because there's been times when I say, and I think, uh, a good friend of mine over here to my left is thinking the same thing, but I don't wanna leave anybody out, because you know, the, the morale factor sits in, you know? If, if we just bump these, these folks up and leave others out, uh, I, I just don't wanna step on any toes, cause you know, everybody's trying to do their best job that they can. And well, you know, if you're making a hundred thousand dollars, well, I believe you earned it, you know? Some, 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 uh, somewhere down the road, you know, you did the right thing. So I would hate to leave anybody out. If it worked out where we could, I guess, you know, I'm just one vote. But I, I guess what I'm trying to say is salaries is my interest and bumping up the folks at the bottom up, a, a good, a good percentage, you know, to, you know, help them out is, you know, what we're talking about, you know, rent increases, I'm not saying they're all renters, but there's a lot of them are, you know, it's going, it's going to affect their pocketbook. So, again, these custodians, the, the, the cook helpers, the cashiers, the accounting clerks and the meter technicians, and the list goes on and on, that, that'd be my interest, mayor, just to kinda help those folks up a little bit.
If I could comment on that.
Yes, please.
Um, if, if I could call your attention to.
If I could call your attention to grade eight, and you'll see that there's a meter reader there. If you go to grade 10, you have a meter technician and a meter service representative. Those people supervise the meter readers. If we move all the six, seven, eight, nines, and tens up to 20,000, then you have supervisors making the same as the people that they're supervising. So you have to be careful, and that's where the compression comes in, when you're talking about different grades.
Okay. And that I didn't know, but I hear what you're saying.
Certainly. I mean, so that's why you have to look and see which jobs you'd be moving, but obviously, I don't have a dollar figure today to take all of those grades up to 20,000. I've got a flash drive with me that I could compute it pretty quickly. But you just have to be careful that you're not mixing the classes together.
You developed, it was at least half a dozen different options for different types of pay increases that you circulated earlier. Do you have those with you today?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Mayor, maybe when we get finished with the rest of council comments, you know, we're starting to see a pattern where we want the heaviest increases to go at the lower end. Maybe after we, maybe we could get her back up here and show us what some of those options are again, refresh our memories. Did you have some options where you emphasized higher pay at below certain thresholds?
Yes, sir. And I had also in that Friday packet, I think, two weeks ago, I'd provided scenarios for under 40,000, under 45,000, under 50,000. I don't have that on the flash drive, but I, yes, that form. If you all have your hard copies with you, we could go certainly through that. I also did a short little example to show you the differences with whether or not we fund vacancies, and what that does to the ranges, because we've talked about that, where if you fund just the positions that have people in them, that does nothing to the ranges to raise the starting salaries. And, so, I mean, I'd be happy to discuss any of that that you want.
Because, you know, even the bottom line, it says it right there, we want to attract candidates and retain employees, so we need to do something, you know. And I believe we've tried our best over the years, but I think we need to continue down that road, is trying to bump up some of these folks' salaries. Mayor, that's all I have. Is that enough? Do you want more? Okay.
Mr. Seale?
Well, I would just like to start out by saying, I think we've got great staff. I think we've got great employees. I think they really strive hard to do a good job for the city, and I want to commend them. And I guess my two things would be, one, Lisa, we were looking at wages and salaries with being a 3%, and that was gonna roughly cost in the neighborhood of about $647,000. Does that include vacancies?
And the $600,000 number was which one? Was it one of mine, or was it one of Morgan's?
I'm sorry?
The $600,000 number, was it one of Morgan's, or was it one of mine? Is it Morgan's number you're talking?
It's the 3%, 647. Yeah, it's the 3% Morgan's.
That does not include vacancies.
Do we have a number for vacancies?
Yes, sir. That's my number. Hold on, and I'm calling it up if you don't mind just a second here. I'm sorry.
Lisa, do you want me to send somebody to make some copies of these?
I beg your pardon?
Do you want me to send somebody to make copies of these?
No, I think everybody has them. Do they all have them?
I don't.
Oh, you didn't bring yours?
No. I had them at one time.
Thank you.
Lots of copies, Rick. Thank you.
Mayor, while they're doing that, do we have a, do we want to set a time for us to get out of here? I mean, I don't want to be here all night.
I'm gonna tell you what, if anybody gets ready to make a motion to adjourn, you got my second.
I guess, I think we have to, I think we have to look at vacancies. If we don't, then we're doing what we need to do to retain employees, but we're not doing what we need to do to hire new employees. So I think we need to look at the possibility of moving vacancies, moving everything up at one time. That would be one of my, I guess, one of my items to look at. If we're gonna give salary increases to employees, and I think, I think they deserve it, I think they do a good job. I do think they have, they're confronted with what Winky said a while ago, you know, property values have increased, whether they're renting, or whether they're buying their own home. They're faced with the same thing we're all faced with, is increased bills. So I think that's real important. And really, I'll cut mine short, too, so we can go on.
Enlighten us, Mr. Fleming.
Can you come back up here and put in the numbers of the overall budget, and let's play with something here? I love Winky's deal, the spreadsheet on Winky's thing, and I want to get, I want to do the general budget first, and then we want to go to these secondary budgets, I think, real quick, because Winky's, I totally agree with Winky on this workers' compensation thing. I think we need to get rid of it. It's a lot of money that's going. What I, the way I see it is, I agree with everybody, and I think we're all, not all, but a lot of us are in the same agreement with raising the lower-paid workers' rates a little bit higher than the upper end. We need to make sure that we don't cause more of a compression issue. When I'm plugging in the numbers, and I'm a numbers guy, so I'm always, Marty's over here will probably be watching me the whole time, writing out numbers the whole time. This is what I would like to come up with, and I think that Winky and Charlotte might like this also, because I think this would be a good compromise for everybody. I would like to offer a 3.5% pay rate. Can you, this is the number I came up with, 766,422. Lower the taxes a full 1%. So go ahead and do the, go ahead and lower the taxes to 1% that Charlotte was asking for, which is 370,000.
Rodney, can I clarify, please? We've heard percent. Typically, we've expressed that as cents, not per cent.
One cent. One cent. I'm sorry, I did say that wrong. One cent. One cent, which is 370,000 roughly. And then, the remainder of what we had on that board was 172,000, I think, $213,000, in order to get to that 1.308,635.
If you back out, we had added raises to address fire compression earlier. If I take that out?
Yeah, I would raise that to the 172,213.
Right. So I have a contingency of 172,213.
And that gets us where we're at on the money. That, on the general fund, I kind of think, if we do all those things, and then we can talk about taking some items out still, if there are enough people to vote on that or go over that. Winky, would you be happy with that, with lowering the one cent on the taxes? The reason why I'm saying, Winky, instead of 2% on the pay raises and going to 3.5%, this is, to me, it's a very big deal, and I know that you probably know this issue more than anybody. The rental rates in this city have gone up between 10% and 15% just in the last six months. Just in the last six months, they've gone up 10% to 15%. If we're offering a lot of these lower-paid workers 3.5%, I personally, I would like to do a lot more, but I'm trying to compromise here and make it happy for everybody. I think that Winky and Charlotte, they've persuaded me that on this 1% or 1 cent lowering tax values, I think that that's a good deal, because we did make that commitment as a city 10 years ago, and we are. I know, I hear it all the time, we are one of the highest cities in the whole state. So I think if we do continue on that track, and we lower it to 1 cent, I think that we can give 3.5% to our workers. They deserve much, much more than that. And then, the fireman issue, I know that they want 244,000. Next year, hopefully, we can come back, and we can give them a little extra next year and try to fix that problem. I talked to Michael and Rick on this, on the Columbaria, and they're telling me, we can do the Columbaria out of the other fund, and it can be done. And I want to make sure that we're right here in front of everybody, we're saying, we're going to do that. 300, the 316,000 of that part would become out of the other fund, it wouldn't come out of this fund. Is that correct?
If that's what, if that's what you direct, that's what we'll do.
Yeah, I'm not, y'all need to discuss this, if you're, if you would be up for this. Let me hear your thoughts. I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to steamroll everybody on this.
You don't have anything in raises to address fire compression. Is that the 171 that's down in contingencies?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, because...
Well, it's just, no, the...
No.
No.
It's already there. Change the title from contingencies to fire compression.
Yeah, just right there.
Yeah, let's put in the first years.
There you go. There you go.
Okay, there it is.
Well, you can do it in two steps, and have 122,000 this year.
Right. But I think that if we're looking at the big picture on this thing, we have 1.3 million, and we can debate, the scariest part about all this is 1.3 million is a drop in the bucket about what we're talking about. We need to just look at the big picture of this thing, move on. We need to get to these things that, to me, bother me, Winky's deal on this workers' compensation incentive, I would like to get rid of that. So, but we gotta, we gotta focus on getting this general fund done, and then move on to the other funds, and see if we can slash the things he's talking about. That's my opinion.
Rodney, let me ask you, all that 3.5%, again, is that across the board, or how is that?
Well, I think we all, most of us have talked about that, and I don't want to do a 3.5% across the board. I would like if you're, I'd like us to set a cutoff here of some sort, and I think that we would need to talk with everybody and see, if, maybe if you're making more than 50,000, you get a 1% raise. If you're making lower than that, you get a 5% raise, or something like that. You know, that's off the top of my head, and I'm just spitballing on that.
Right.
But, of course, the lower-end people are the ones that are having the hardest problems with the rent, and with everything in the city. Everything is going up, and that's the ones we really want to concentrate, I believe we really want to concentrate on.
I'm with you. Well, I would still like to stick the 54,000 in there somewhere that I discussed, too, with the clerks, and, you know, see what we can come up with, something for the dispatchers because of the amount of turnover that we have in those positions, and I think that that would solve lots of problems in both of those.
But that can be worked out in that 3.5, can it?
Yeah, you can be reduced, reduce it to 700,000, I guess, round figures.
Right.
Morgan, would you please change that 171 to half of the 240? What did we say the...
Yeah, we said 125, basically.
Yes. Now, that leaves you with a little bit of, thank you. Well put. Now, there's 46 that has not been allocated, and we can talk about all the other things that...
I would, I'm not fine with it.
What's the bottom line there, Morgan?
Zero.
It's not zero.
Yes, it's an exact balanced budget.
But you've got 46 there that's in contingencies, and realistically, let's talk about where we are so far. We're close to talking about some other things that we can make a decision on. If this is something that council can vote on, we can take this and run with it, and we can decide how to allocate the, we've got a block of money here, 766,000, we can talk about how to allocate that and firm that up. That is a concern, because HR has lots of work to do to try to allocate that and prep us for October 1.
Why don't we just round that off to 800, it'd be 812,000 roughly, but put your contingency fund in there, and then we can include my proposal in there, and then let you and HR and everybody work out how it actually works on paper. Well, how would that leave us on a contingency?
That would leave nothing for a contingency.
Yeah. What's the normal custom in practice, so you never end up with a zero?
Well, we, this is just current revenues and expenditures. We do have general fund fund balance that we think of in terms of contingency money. So we shoot for a balanced budget, this or better. And the challenge is, if you budget a net profit, you're collecting more than you're actually using, and if you don't have a specific objective for that in mind, that becomes a difficult issue politically, so.
I think this is a fair deal. I mean, everybody's kind of getting what they want. I do agree with Charlotte on one thing. Next year, we gotta start early, and we need to be in on those meetings and seeing the little things being done. But this year, we're kind of in a time crunch. I think this would solve a lot of our problems, it's not gonna solve them, but it's gonna help some of our problems. Next year, what we need to do is, as a council, we need to be in on a few more of those things, and I think maybe it'll answer a few more questions. And I do like it where we are altogether in on those, because Charlotte was right on us feeding off each other on what should and what should not be done. When we get up here, a lot, we have no idea. I have no idea what she's thinking, I have no idea what Winky's thinking. Every one of us has a different thought process of what they're wanting. But I think for this year, this would, we could get this done and move on to this, we need to go to the next fund that we need to talk about, that we do need to do some cuts on.
Let me have my say-so. Everybody else has, everybody else has been able to talk. And I do agree with Don. I agree with Don. We've got to bring our bottoms up. We have got to bring our workers up, we've got to bring our CDLs up, we've got to bring our dispatchers up.
Nothing, Johnny, I...
Bottoms up. We've got to bring our bottoms up.
We've got to bring those on the bottom up. The CDLs, municipal courts, the dispatchers, I think every one of these need to be brought up. And I like 45,000 as a, as a starting point. Now, we were talking at 4%. A 4% was almost $886,000. Okay, you've got 812 and 125 plugged in right there. I like the 125 to address the compression, but I'd start with about 880, that 4%, that's $886,000. Let's use that 886,000 as a figure, and then work from that. I do not like percentage increases, because those that's making $50,000 gets 3%, those that make $16,000 get 3%, and there's no way that that'll ever work. And we have got to bring our bottom workers up. As far as the 1% sales tax, we have reduced it 10% since '06. We have followed the commitment that we made. I would like to see a rainy day fund, and I'm gonna continue to preach to that. We had some extra in our, from our increases on property taxes. We've got 370 for 1%. I would like to put a rainy day fund together. I would like to, and maybe next year to start this, any increases in property taxes goes into a savings account, goes into a rainy day fund, so that we are building up some contingencies, because when this oilfield bust comes, we're going to be stuck with a lot of problems and no money to take care of it. I really would like to see a rainy day fund, and I think this 1% sales tax would be a very good place to start. That's $370,000. Let's put it into a savings account. The car allowances, I think this is something that we're already taking care of. This is going to work itself out. And if it's cheaper than reimbursement, then we probably need to stay where we are. As far as these pilot funds on wastewater, we need an ordinance, and we need it in a very close meeting, so that we can get this taken care of, because the intent of the council was to do away with pilots. We dealt with this in '06. We were talking specifically about water increases, so, but we were talking about pilot funds, period, in everything. And if we just did it in water, and we didn't do it in wastewater, we need an ordinance, and we need it now, because these pilot funds need to end. They are not good for us. I do want to see Fairmount Cemetery. I want to see them financed, whether we do it out of our capital funds, or whether we do it out of our general fund, it makes no difference. But that is money that will, that will increase, that will take care of itself. These are funds that will pay themselves back, so we need to, we need to get the Columbarium funds in this budget, one way or another. And do it like Rodney said, with capital, or we can do it in general funds. I don't say it makes any difference. We just need to get them in there. But we have got to increase the wages on our people, our CDL drivers and our dispatchers. That's got to happen, and we're going, we're gonna have supervisors out hooking up water if we don't get something done quickly, because they're leaving us. So, there's mine.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
One, one clarification and question. These increases, whatever they ultimately end up being...
Excuse me. These raises and increases for the employees, whatever they end up being, shouldn't there be a proviso in there that if you haven't been in the employ of the city for more than a year, or if you just raised, if you just got an increase in your salary as a result of changing positions or moving up, it seemed to me like those would need to be exempted, because like if you just worked one day hypothetically, would you be entitled to the raise?
Yes. I would say so, because these people are having to buy the same groceries that everyone else buys. The expenses are there, the rent is there, the gasoline is there, the groceries are there, the utilities are there. Yes, they're having to pay this. Yes, they're having to pay this. I think it is an embarrassment that we have people working for our city that are not even making a living wage. And I, I fought this for years.
Of course, I'm referring more to the top end.
Uh, top end, I, I think I said forty-five thousand dollars. Don said forty or fifty.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with that. Those that are under that threshold, we need to use the eight hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars to bring them up. Those that are over that threshold, forty-five would work, fifty would work. Those that are over that threshold, they're able to, they're able to successfully live. Those that are below that threshold are suffering.
Fair enough.
Mayor, can I get a better understanding? A couple of things. It looks, it sounds like what you suggested is substantially what's on the screen with, with two exceptions. One is the tax rate. You're saying leave the tax rate as it is, but capture the three hundred and seventy and start a rainy day fund?
That's what I'd do. I'd put some money back. If we don't put some money back, we're going to get caught in a bind.
Okay, I'll come back to that in just a minute. And the other is, you said eight hundred and eighty-five or eight hundred and eighty-six thousand for raises?
Four percent was eight eighty-five, eight twenty-six, so I just said eight hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. That's four percent.
That was Morgan's number?
That was Morgan's number.
Okay.
Then that number probably doesn't include funding the vacant positions.
Right, it only addresses current staff, but it's, it's just a placeholder figure that could be used for anything that's the council's pleasure.
I'm just, I'm just throwing it out as a figure to work with.
Morgan, whether we give the three seventy back in a tax rate reduction, or we capture it for rainy day fund, it needs to be in there. So, would you put it back in, please? All right. Now, what that does is you'll see that contingencies line says seventy-two thousand. That is, these are all reductions, so when, without those brackets, that means we're over budget seventy-two thousand. If she zeroed that out, we, our total down at the bottom would be, we'd be out of balance seventy-two thousand. That's the difference between the eight eighty-five and the eight six, eight twelve or eight sixteen that was in there before. And so, the.
No, seven sixty-six is what I added in.
Well, it was seven something plus Don, Don's.
He added in, that's right, that's right, yeah.
So, eight twelve. Now, uh, Mayor, if we leave the eight eighty-five in, we're a little over, we're a little overspent there. Uh, if we leave the eight twelve and the three seventy, then we're balanced. Now, that is approximately seven thousand, seventy thousand dollars that, that won't go for raises or something else. But with the eight twelve in there, Mayor, you, you're, the only difference that remains in the proposal is you want to capture the three seventy for future issues?
Yes, sir.
And others have talked about reducing the property tax rate by three seventy.
And, and just like, and just like has been said, I'm only one vote, but I would vote to put it in a savings account. But if we've got four people to vote to spend it, we'll spend it. But I, I just don't like to spend every dime that we have. I want, I want some savings there.
May I?
Yes, ma'am.
I hear what you say, and I have always agreed with you about the rainy day fund or savings or whatever you wanted to call it. But by taking away from the citizens who work and live here, who scream about their property taxes, and as high as it is, it's the continued goal to reduce that rate and for us to do with less, and I want to go on record as saying, I don't have a problem with the employees at all. There's, the city has got some fabulous employees, but what I'm saying is you need to realize you work for the people, and the people have to be considered. And to me, giving the employees that kind of increase and taking away their property tax rate slaps our citizens right in the face, to me, that's.
Understood. I can accept that. I see what you're saying. But you also said a while ago that if we run out of water, we're gonna have to go buy water.
We are gonna have to buy water.
We're, it takes X amount of money to run our city, and if we don't have it, we're going to have to borrow it. So, if we've got money in a rainy day fund, a contingency fund, if we plan for things, then we've got the money when we do need it. We don't have to raise taxes or raise permit fees because we've got money that we have put back to prepare ourselves for, for things that we do not know that's gonna happen, so.
Could you take two hundred thousand out of your raises?
No.
And the employees still get the money? I mean, I thought that the, her recommended was six hundred, or did I misunderstand that?
I like the four percent.
Okay, fine.
What about if, what about you just split the difference on the lower tax rate? Just, we'll do a half, half cent and do the rest for rainy day?
I don't, I wouldn't have a problem. I can negotiate there.
Yeah, just, let's just try to work out.
I wanna put some money back, and you know, that may be, we have taken half-cent reductions since oh six.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's better than nothing, Charlotte. I mean, everybody, and next year, hopefully, we're getting more on taxes so we can increase, we, 'cause Dwayne's right. We do need to, I'm really scared, and Charlotte's right about the water situation. What are we gonna do in the future when we don't? And it's probably gonna be millions of dollars then.
Definitely gonna have to have water, money to pay for the water.
Yes, Johnny.
No, I was gonna say, I totally agree with you and, and now Rodney on that three hundred and seventy, 'cause it doesn't matter what bucket we put it in, you know, we own those buckets, you know, we as citizens own those buckets, so if you want to call it a rainy day fund or a savings account or whatever you want to call it, it's still their money for us to use at a later date if we had to, so.
But I, I don't have a problem with halving it, and go with a half-cent reduction and a half-cent in a rainy day fund. At least I'll get a fund I've been asking for, for the last ten years started it, started, and then next year, I would like to put in an ordinance. If, if we've got our property appraisal at X, every in, every dollar increase over X goes into that rainy day fund. That way, we will have a, 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 a source from which we can continue to build our rainy day fund. So, I don't have a problem with going a half-cent. If we can negotiate that down, I can work with that. I'm good.
Mayor, if I could, the money you set aside in the rainy day fund, at, at some point, we'll be coming back to council and talking about big capital issues, like, you know, police station has come up, streets continually comes up, stormwater continually comes up, and the one thing about putting money in a rainy day fund is that it's there for a rainy day, but it, it is also there for streets or other capital issues if council decides that those are priorities.
And wouldn't it be great to have a big, large amount of money so that if we did need an extra million to do something, it would be there? We, if we put it in, we can take it out, a majority vote. But if it's, if it's never put there in the first place, there's no money to take out. I'd like to get it started. If we start it with a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, that's, that's more we have in savings than we had yesterday.
Well, one of the things that I think, here again, next year, it's watering to the bridge now, but we need to, to start earlier on this to where we know all the idiosyncrasies of this thing so that we can have it worked out by the time we're under the gun to approve this thing, and go line by line and see what we can do to, to get her done.
I, I agree with you one hundred percent.
Mayor, I think as in Daniel's absence, he's talked about that some with staff over the last few weeks. So, I think his intention is to get that started quick after this is over with, so we'll iterate that.
Possibly a good day to start working on next year's budget would be October the second.
And Don, you know, to add what you're saying, that's a good idea. I've been here five years, and we're always right under the gun. We always end up just like this. We always end up like, we said, we need to start early next year. We're here, here we are again, five years later.
But at least we have more than two workshops in the past. That's all we've had.
Well, there were plenty of opportunities this year. It's just other items pushed it out.
Why don't we just set the agenda and have workshops between, like we were doing these Tuesdays between the Tuesdays? Do it like for three months beforehand.
We'd love to.
I don't see a problem with that at all. I think that's an excellent idea. Does someone want to make a motion to approve this?
Can we approve this?
Well, we can approve it in theory, can't we?
Absolutely. This is, this directs staff for how you want the money spent. It directs us for preparation of the, um, tax levy ordinance. This is absolutely exactly what we're looking for.
And it doesn't, it doesn't hold any, it's, it's, we're not putting it in concrete. It can still be changed at our next meeting, but it gives staff some numbers to work with.
I move that we give this as direction towards what we are trying to achieve.
Excuse me, this is a work session for discussion only?
That's why I was asking if, can we do that?
So, we cannot?
We can direct staff then.
That's right. We hear, we hear your direction. We will bring, uh, we will follow up in accordance with this.
My mistake. Forgive me, please.
Mine also, thank you.
As a consensus, is this something that we can work with, with staff, as a consensus?
Rodney, pull your motion, and I won't make.
I'll pull the motion.
I won't make my second.
I, I move it.
And I didn't say anything about making motions or moving anything, but we do have a consensus that this will be something for staff to work with, to bring something back at next meeting, so that we can move to approve.
Okay. Yeah, but now, let's, let's go real quickly on to the, what Winky was talking about. Let's go to that fund, the first one.
Wait a minute, what is the salary deal?
I would suggest forty-five thousand. Everything under forty-five needs to be raised so that these people, so that our employees are, have a living wage to live with.
What are we doing with over forty-five?
Well, over forty-five, they're not gonna get much, if any. We need, we, our, our over forty-five workers are able to, they're able to successfully live. Now, they may not live high, but they can, they can survive. Those that's making under forty-five thousand dollars are not even able to live, so that's the ones that I would say focus on, and that's, again, that's, that's up to the rest of y'all. That's just my opinion.
I agree with that.
And, and my other question would be, do you want to tie this to performance?
Oh, yes.
Meets expectation, exceeds expectations.
That's council question. Don, what you think?
When I was being appraised and appraising, I hated the meets and, and exceeds. I mean, there's such a thin line between those two, and, you know, even though it's, it's not spoken, I always felt like, you know, you need to be really careful because you'll over exceed, and everybody, for the most part, that's managing people thinks that their employees are doing good jobs. So, you know, to me, I, I think it's, it needs to be a pass or fail. But, but that's just me and the way I look at it.
Marty, what's your feelings on this, sir?
Well, I, I don't think we should cut out the people over forty-five. Now, you know, to say they're gonna get a four percent, or if, if that's what y'all want to base it on, you know, possibly not, but, but to, to say, you know, we're, we're going to forget those guys isn't right. They, they work just as hard i- is the ones that are under forty-five, and, and I still think you have to address vacancies, you know? If, if you don't address vacancies, then you're, where, where do you get new, new hires from? So, that, that's my two points on the deal.
Well, don't, don't you have rollback whenever, if, if a position is left open, that salary goes back into the, into a fund? In other words, if you've got a forty thousand sour, dollar salary that's open for a year, that forty thousand dollars is not used, and so it goes into a contingency or?
It just, it, it's not expended, and so it falls to net income in the statements, and that closes or falls to fund balance.
Yeah, so, the money's still there, it's just.
But we don't make it available in the next year unless there's some initiative that drives that money to be pulled out of fund balance.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
At a later date, not today, I would like to discuss how our hiring is done and the process, because I've had so many complaints about people who apply three, four, and five times with the city before they even get an interview, and I just would like to sit down and be able to talk about that process.
I do think, Lisa, while you're up here, we do need, we did got some questions answered, we need answered. It sounds like we have one council member saying we do need to address vacancies. Is that a consistent feeling across council that vacancies should all, adjusted pay plans?
You got a consensus there.
And as I understand it, the eight hundred and twelve, nine fifty-three number does include vacancies.
Does, we'll need to, it, it has to accommodate also.
Absolutely.
Rodney, did you have another comment, sir?
Well, I think I said this earlier, and I agree with Marty on this. You know, the kind of way I see it, I wasn't saying cut out the people above forty-five thousand. I was saying more like they get a one percent, the lower people get the other three percent divided amongst them. So, that's kind of the way I was seeing. I, I see, you know, in the past, everybody looks forward to, to some kind of raise, so I think everybody does deserve some kind of raise, because like I said, the cost of living has gone up ten to fifteen percent or more in the last six months here. And that hasn't just gone up for the lower end people. It has gone up for the upper end people also. So, I think we should come up with some kind of formula words, you know. I definitely don't think they should get four percent.
Well, one, one of the things, like Dwayne mentioned a while ago, to me is if you, if you put a percent in it, then, you know, the, the more you make, the more you get. What I would suggest is let Lisa work on it and come back with a recommendation for a set amount, three hundred dollars, five hundred dollars, something like that for, for the higher paid, and then maybe a percentage for the lower.
And I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
That's a great idea.
It's just if we do not build our bottom, our bottoms, the bottom people up, we're gonna lose them.
Okay, if I could just, and I'm sorry, I've got, I've just, a lot of questions. All right, so you want to address vacancies. We don't, we have vacancies that are in the positions that are over fifty thousand. So, what do we do with those jobs? You know, if, if we're gonna raise the ranges, I mean, I just need to understand, we're talking funding all vacancies, no matter what grade they are, so that, that means those ranges, if they go up, they're gonna go up for the new people too.
Johnny?
Morgan, maybe you can help out, but somebody, please tell me again, I know we lowered the tax rate by half a cent with a hundred and eighty-five. I see the, the split there. The contingency amount, tell me again what that is.
Rainy day.
Rainy day. What, what happens if we raise on the, the raises for employees? If we go up to a five percent and take away from some of that contingency fund? I, I'm just throwing this out, okay? Move it up to five and give.
Quarter of a million dollars.
Is it?
Five percent.
Eleven twenty-five from eight eighty-five.
Five, five percent on raises for forty-five thousand dollars a year is that eight seventy-eight?
Okay, but I'm not saying, I'm not saying five percent across the board. What I'm saying is maybe I'm even willing to bump it up to say like fifty thousand as a threshold, giving those folks fifty and below a three percent, and maybe everybody above a two percent. I mean, I'm, I'm still in, in the mindset of, hey, just because, I'll throw somebody out there, Ricky Dixon makes the money he makes. I mean, I still want to pat him on the back for the job he's doing, you know? I just don't want to leave, I, I'm with, I don't want to leave, you know, people out, you know? I think they work hard, or I would hope they do, and I think they're doing a good job. I just don't want to leave some folks out. If, if the, if we can tweak that, if that works, a three and a two, I mean, I'm.
What, what if we take the eight hundred and twelve, what if we take five hun, what if we take five hundred thousand of that and devote that to the lower, below fifty, and we take the rest? Is there something we could use as a threshold there? Because it looks like we almost have a consensus that we're not gonna put a limit on it.
Can I say one thing right quick?
Yes, sir.
I, I think, based on what was said earlier, uh, staff is very creative.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, and Lisa, I have all the faith in the world that, that you can bring us something back based upon that eight hundred and twelve that will include vacancies, will include some kind of percentage for something forty-five and under, and then possibly, like Don said, a set number, a set amount for, for the people over forty-five. And, and why don't you use your creativity and come to us, and then we'll give you some direction if we don't like it?
Very good. That was, that was my suggestion I was gonna make.
Very well said.
If you can just give us that you want to do something for over and something for under, we can master that and come up with what that should be.
Well, I will agree with that one.
Mayor, we do need some more detail, and that was the detail in Don's part of the proposal. Don, can you remind us what positions, and we need to confirm that that's still part of this proposal?
Well, what, what I was looking at is we were at about fifty-four thousand dollars, and that's why we talked about putting the contingency in there. That's for the, the non-certified peace officers, non-civil service peace officers, but are certified, non-civil service but are certified, being brought up along with, with the clerks at municipal court and the dispatchers. Now, here again, if we, if we need to take baby steps just to, to get it started where it'll help maybe keep some of them, that's fine, but we only have so much money, and, and I don't want to take from that, but by the same token, I just think that if we stick some more pay in there, that will help retain some of those employees.
Should we leave, do you want specific, you want a specific effort in that direction? Or do you want to leave some discretion for Lisa to bring back? She talked about possibly some of those jobs needed to be reclassified.
They do, and, and I've already looked at them, and they do, so.
So, do you want to handle it that way, or do you want specific actions?
No, no, that's fine. However. No, no, that's fine, however...
So again, Lisa's discretion on that.
Right. Worked out between Lisa and the judge and...
And, and the thing with that, Michael, is that the funding for those changes would still need to, we'd have to have it, so we would take it out of that eight hundred and twelve.
Exactly. That's why I was concerned, I wanted to...
I'm happy with that.
And, and I'm sorry, John, not to beat a horse, but the meets and exceeds, we, do we have consensus that we want this to be performance-based?
I heard one say no.
I don't really like it.
Across the board.
To, to me, performance, yes, I think they need to be evaluated, but I don't think that there needs to be a meets, exceeds, or unsatisfactory. I think either it's unsatisfactory or you, you get the raise. It, it's so much easier that way.
And I think if we'll get these wages up where the people can make a living, we're gonna, we're gonna solve a whole lot of these problems with meets and exceeds and do not, because if it's a job that people can make a living with, they're going to try and keep the job. So I don't, I don't know, if we'll get those wages up, I think a lot of these problems will take care of theirself. That, you know, that maybe just be me, but...
So is it across the board, or is it performance-based?
I'd say across the board.
Across the board.
There's your consensus right there.
Thank you, thank you, Brad.
Bottoms up. Morgan?
Guys are getting close.
I think we're ready to move on, possibly, but that, that percentage ends up being three and a half, not four.
It's four. It's four. It's four.
It's, it's not gonna be either, because you're bringing up the bottom and having a set amount at the top.
Well, no, but there's not four percent in there, is there?
I don't think so. I think, I, I think it's gonna...
It was three and a half plus the fifty-four thousand, wasn't it?
I think so.
Plus one twenty-five for fire, so it's a variable amount.
Yeah. Pardon me?
Be a little more than four then, won't it? No, the, the...
Depends on who you stop.
Yeah, that's right, the fire was two, two forty, that's right.
The fire is separate, and it, in the, in the PowerPoint we presented earlier, fire was not separate, and so these are numbers that are parked in this way and, and will be varied for under forty-five, separate for fire, separate for vacancies, the, the freedom to, to make those, those impacts in that way.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, I know that you didn't mean to insult your right over here, but, you know, when you say, you, 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 me, that's my four, don't need to go any further, it's totally not giving a voice to, to this end.
I was looking at Don when I got my first one, and I didn't see any, I didn't see any motions from you, so I went to that side. I looked at Don first, he was my first. So if you've got something to say, you need to say it, and I'll just sit there, because I'm going somewhere, I'm going for, I'm going for four votes, or a consensus of four. So I looked at you first. Let's move on.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We've had one council member, Mr. Wardlaw, bring up some specific items. I think as staff, we'd like clarity on how to move forward on those, specifically the workers' comp incentive plan. I'll give you some options there in, in the interest of time. We can try to work that out today, we can bring that back at a future date with it in the budget with a, or we can bring it, or we can move ahead and bring it back at a future date without that authorization. Do you, so there's three options. Again, discuss it today, move ahead without it, move ahead with it, and bring it back.
I don't want it in the budget, that's my, that's my opinion, that's my vote.
Because that's in a separate fund, it doesn't affect the, the spreadsheet we just worked on, but it still is something we need direction from council on.
I'm okay, I'm okay with it.
Could I just make one comment on that, I beg your pardon? The, just so that you know, we did zero our balance, our, our balanced budget, and so in order to pay that two hundred and fifty thousand to the safety incentive plan, we took it out of our claims, and we're crossing our fingers, so are you suggesting that that goes back into claims, or does it go away from the budget altogether?
From a financial management standpoint, I'd say we can, we can do it either way.
Probably go back into claims, because then if it's not used, it goes back into fund balance.
That's right.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't gone, gone. Thank you.
And we can bring that topic back for a deeper discussion if council would like, but some direction today, we, we would appreciate.
All right.
I think deal away with it, yeah. Put it back in claims.
Satisfied motion, Judge?
Taking it out, right.
Taking it out, is that what we're hearing? All right. The next thing, Mr. Wardlaw mentioned, cell phone increases, that's a lot of information. Would you like a review of cell phone activity, what numbers of phones exist, and what we see happening in rates? Would you like to make a decision today, or, or postpone that decision and have a discussion later on?
We can gather more information, but I think some of us think there's too much expenditure on cell phones, and too many people have them, so, but I'm willing, I'm open-minded to looking at additional information.
How about, why don't I propose then, and I'm gonna need staff to speak up if you see a problem with this, why don't we impose some kind of a freeze on the number of cell phones which exist, or number of positions which are authorized to cell phones at this point pending a future council discussion of the matter? What does council think about that?
No, that's good, that's good.
That's a big jump, though, in one year, sixty-three thousand, that's unbelievable. I would be, I would be looking for another company if it was my own plan.
Well, that's one of the reasons I'd like to look into it, I'd like to look into it further, so...
I agree with Winky on that one.
I, I as well. We're agreeing, we in agreement on that?
Yes.
All right. The next CVB increase, and actually CVB increase and arts council increase are both items related to occupancy tax. They both have contracts, and I believe we budgeted the amounts in those contracts, is that right, Morgan?
Correct.
Can we authorize those to be as-is, however direct staff to bring back a discussion of that occupancy tax distribution methodology?
Well, we've already dealt with this. We dealt with this several months ago, maybe if we need to deal with it again, I guess we can, but the reason we went to these figures is to get away from a percentage base, and this seemed to be a better setup, so, you know, if we wanna come back with it...
Well, I, I agree with you, this is, just because we're receiving more doesn't mean you want to increase the spending, that it need to be held in reserves, and that's the reason we did what we did.
That's why we did it.
For clarity's sake, I wanna point out that one of the contracts, the CVB contract is for an amount certain, the arts portion is still a percentage.
No, we, we need to get rid of that.
It needs to be all the same.
Let's bring, let's bring that one back, let's, as staff, we'll take direction and bring that back for discussion, we'll present what the existing contract is, what the existing terms are, and get council's direction on what they're, what they would have staff do from that standpoint.
Because this does not affect our budget.
Yeah, but, but the reason it needs to be attended to is because it's created a, a hundred percent increase in what's budgeted for them, and that, that can't be correct.
Is, do you have the arts council as a separate line?
Correct, it's here, arts council proposed budget for fiscal year fourteen, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, which should be five percent of one point seven five million, which is...
And what did they actually receive last year?
In fiscal year twelve, they received a hundred and six thousand, which was five percent of the receipts for fiscal year twelve.
We, we have a contract with them that suggests a percentage amount, if we bring that back in, within a few months for discussion, that will give us some time to make some adjustment. Would that be satisfactory to council? Before the end of the calendar year, is that a, is that a timeline that is sufficiently swift to satisfy council?
Satisfies me, to satisfy you. Mr. Wardlaw?
Yes, sir, as long as we don't forget it. My memory's pretty short these days.
Well, I think I've got a couple of folks writing it down, so we'll be talking about occupancy tax anyway as we talk about the excess that has been accumulating in the civic events fund.
All right, down here on the left end, all right on the right end? Okay.
Mayor, we have gotten direction from council on the general fund, we've covered some specific items that were brought up by council, I'm not aware of other specific items. We could talk about other funds today or another day, as you deem appropriate.
How body said, I'll second the motion, so it's up to y'all, if you wanna go, if you wanna stay.
What time is it?
Four thirty-eight.
Twenty-two five.
I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of adjourning, I do wanna talk about the Costa DC budget and the storm and floodwater budget, but I'm prepared to do that at a later date in an expeditious and quick manner.
Can we set up a meeting, another budget meeting, and do this besides the city council meeting? Because we all know how packed those have been. I'm not for more meetings, but I think that these, this works out good if we do these in little chunks, little bites at a time.
Absolutely, we can set up.
Well, I'd like to do that.
Well, I hear what y'all are saying, do we, do we know what the next agenda's looking like? There may not be much on it, I don't know.
I have about eighteen items right now.
And I still have one or two that I'm gonna put on. I still have two.
So that's four o'clock, then?
Let me ask you, or point out that at the next council meeting, we'll have the second reading of the budget ordinance, we'll pass the budget as, as amended in today's action at that time. What we'll be working with, let's say we get into one of these areas and we decide that we need to change in scope for that operation, we'll be amending that budget at some future date, and so it'll be difficult to hurry up enough to get any potential changes into the original budget. We'd be talking about amending the budget anyway, so it, it doesn't necessarily have to be next time because we're gonna be, it's an amendment-style discussion.
I'd much rather take it head-on, get it out of the way, myself, just try to have a short meeting lasting no more than two hours or so, and try to run through some of